Who's presenting on this?
I can start.
Okay, you want to grab a mic?
Yeah.
No, you don't have to stand.
Alright, thank you. Okay, maybe a couple of weeks ago, the board asked me and HR to kind of look at our general paradigm for attorney salaries and how it stacks up basically against other offices in the first district, first judicial district, or Idaho. And so we did do that, and that's kind of what I anticipated, but really, the only office that you really can compare to is Cooten County, because they have a bunch of attorneys. The three other small counties only have basically like one deputy, or maybe two. Some of them are part-time, but they all, they've had to raise their salaries considerably as well. And I can tell you, I know Shoshone County has had a deputy prosecutor position for $94,000 open for a long period of time, which that Allen has not been able to fill. We did get the matrix from Cooten County, but then I knew that, because I just happen to know some of the salaries, because I've known a lot of the old timers at Cooten County. And I thought getting their specific salaries would be more informative for you. And so we did do that, and you can see that many of their positions are substantially higher than ours, which is not a surprise to me. It was either two or three years ago that the Cooten County commissioners looked at their attorney salaries and did a substantial bump for them. And I did know that, but at the time, it just wasn't good for us. And, you know, money is what money is. Compound that with, even though it's not exactly apples to apples, but the judicial salaries, Bill put 10%, it's actually 15% by the Idaho legislature this year. So now magistrates, I believe, will be making $164.
Is that what it was? Okay, I thought that, I just, I only was able just to, I was looking for like news articles on it. I didn't actually see the legislative finding, but it's quite a bit.
Yeah, they asked for 200 for district judges, and I forgot what for magistrates, but they didn't get that, but they did get 15%, which was substantial. And you can say, well, they're judges and you guys are prosecutors. That's true. However, what we do see is we see a lot of younger deputy prosecutors, two of which formerly worked for me down in Cooten County, are applying for two magistrate positions. And then you see like senior level, like Arthur Aaron, their chief deputy in Cooten County, applying for a district judge job. My former colleague Barry McHugh is now a district judge. You see a lot of times the elected or very, very senior members of the offices will go for district judges as opposed to magistrate judges. So there is, there's obviously, well, it's apples to apples when it comes to the, or apples to oranges with the judges. It's definitely relevant, because those positions are being filled by prosecutors. And the reason for that, frankly, is because members of the private bar are making too much money. And that's why they're not interested in judgeships. And so when you look at the list of applicants, you'll see it all, and it'll be public defender, public defender, prosecutor, deputy prosecutor, and not members of the private bar. It's money, is what it is. And that is what it is. I mean, that's not something that can be solved in the public sector. So what we're asking for is essentially that the matrix, that the general county matrix does not work well for the attorney positions in Bonner County anymore. And I think what Bill put in the memo was basically we're asking for a 10% raise for our attorneys, which will put us more competitive with Cooten County. It'll definitely still be substantially below Cooten County prosecutors. We understand that they're a bigger county, traditionally bigger counties have higher salaries, regardless of the cost of living, and obviously Cooten County has high cost of living as well.
Louis, when I graduated from law school, there was like 200 people applying for every open law job. How many were applying from law school for yours?
So zero. And that's an excellent point, Mike. And I can just tell you, so not that very many years ago, when I would have a deputy prosecutor position for a lot less money than what we're even paying right now. I would get 20 to 30 applicants, not all law students, established attorneys. I get, I have to go out and search for them. We actively this year worked with the University of Idaho in Moscow. We did, not only did we not even get an application, I was trying to send my youngest, well, my newest attorney, Robert Abel, down there, because he just graduated last year, and he's friends with some of these kids that are down there. I tried to send him on a recruiting mission, not a single person even signed up to talk to him. So they didn't even want to take 15 minutes out of their day to even consider becoming a deputy prosecutor in Bonner County. I don't think that that's leadership, frankly. I mean, I don't think they're looking online and saying, well, I just don't want to look for that Marshall guy. I think it's indicative, that could be.
I was gonna say.
It's possible, it's possible.
Okay.
It's just indicative of where we are. So this is not just a Bonner County problem, it's not even just a first district problem, it's a state of Idaho problem.
Retention too. We're losing Sarah, another gal, Sarah, who is a stud, and she has decided to go take her talents elsewhere. So it's not just like hiring people, it's keeping them.
What's the case load, like her deputy attorney here versus Cooten County? Like what number?
It's very similar, we may be a little bit more from what I hear. I don't have the specific numbers, but it's because they have so many more, it's not that cheap. It's pretty similar, it's around 75 to 100 for the misdemeanor attorneys, and around 50 maybe for the felony attorneys.
Since Cooten seems to be our closest comparison, do you know how things are going there with regard to recruitment and retention?
They're having difficulties, but they have done better. So before the commissioners adjusted, they were down eight to 10 deputy prosecutors, which is a lot for them.
Right, yeah, close to half there.
Yeah, it was, it was close to half of theirs, and they have done much better since raising salaries. So now I believe they're down in a civil position.
Yeah, and last year, so I did the same kind of exercise last year too, when we were looking at comparables. And at that point, I think they had three open positions on their website that said they'd been open for longer than 30 days. That's down to one now? So I, they are, they still, and I've talked to Darren about that, and they've, they've had one open position that they just can't fill. But it has shrunk, and I think that's probably the result of what Louis is talking about with the adjustment that they made. But I know that, I know that they, and also Shoshone, like you talked about, it's kind of a systemic problem. We've, we've dealt with that too. In fact, we did end up getting good people, like Roberts, you know, Biggie Robbs, and what we call him, he's a really good guy. But it took a long time to fill some of our vacant positions too. When Nick Lapierre left our office and went to Cooten County, we lost, now what, two people doing that?
Yeah.
We didn't fill that position for four, four or five months, I think.
Yeah, I lost two deputies to Cooten County. The two that I mentioned earlier that are now putting in for magistrate judgeships. Money clearly was an issue for those two, not the entire issue. Nick Lapierre lives in, in Cooten County and was tired of the two-hour commute every day. But both, both those people did talk to me about money issues. It was not, we don't like your office and we want to get away from you.
A good way to, like, one of the problems with trying to compare our data versus theirs is that we all, we have their salaries, but we don't have their tenure, right? So that's one thing that makes the data a little less valuable. But there are certain data points that we can reference by personal knowledge. So Katie Murdoch, who's one of the people who left, has the same amount of experience as a prosecutor as Katie Sheridan, who's in our office, but Katie Murdoch makes over 130, and our Katie makes like 110. So there's over a $20,000 gap between those two, and that's a big enough, that's a kind of a, a big enough incentive to lose those.
Yeah, the apples to apples looks approximately like 20. Some it's a little bit more, it's about $20,000.
What I found, I tried to look at those and compare myself, and I think the biggest gap is on the high and the low ends. And there's a little more parity in the middle. So you could go down line by line and see about, you know, individual employees and what they, what they want, what should be appropriate there. The problem is, is that their step in grade system is different than ours. And so like one of the employees we have, who looks like she's closer to, like she's only like 95%, she's only 5% down, something like that. Their, their step in grade system stops at like 14 years, and she's been here for almost 20. So even though there's, you know, she would, you would assume that she would be, she still has that additional value that we're not capturing in that comparative analysis. So, but the, the biggest and the most obvious gaps are the elected. That's, there's a big gap between Louis and Mr. Hornson. And then the chief deputies, but we're gonna, you know, we already talked earlier in the week about how we should treat the chief deputies the same as everybody else is for purposes of, you know, like ordinary raises for the purpose that they do. And then whatever we add later in October will make up that other difference. I'm trying to be consistent with the, or what the vision that the board had earlier in the week. Even though the biggest gaps are the chief deputies, I think, we could account for that in the policymaking that we have, like, the idea that we already had. And then also on the very low end. So Robert, the guy that Louis came in here for earlier to ask you guys about, their lowest paid employee is more than $10,000 higher than him. And because he's lower paid anyway, that percentage-wise, that's a bigger difference. So that's, I think that it's the, the high and the low end are the biggest gaps. Even though, in spite of that, though, I think the reason that I recommended just a flat raise that's equal for everybody is so we don't run into compression issues. HR, you guys deal with that all the time, right? If you move one person and not, you know, some, yes, another, like downstream effects. So although that, you know, there are some positions that will not benefit us as much, or comparatively, Frank Donmeyer's one of them, I'm fine with that. I'd rather it be, I'd rather it be even. That just seems like it is. A, the percentage is something that is understandable. We're not going through and trying to, you know, nitpick each individual position and pick winners and losers. But then, and it also, actually, you know, the lower end, like Robert, he's, he really needs it, and it's a good, it would be a good benefit for him.
Talking about raising the base, right? So like across your stepping grade, it would all come up 10%?
Yeah, 10%.
So then no, yeah, so from that perspective, if that went forward, there would be no change in any one stepping grade? It would be the values associated with the compensation for every stepping grade would change by 10% if that proposal was accepted? Is that what I'm understanding the proposal to be?
Well, I want to, I want to open that up, that's why I invited the auditing folks and HR and everything, because I was able to do this, you know, find the data, review it. But the nuts and bolts of how that actually gets applied to our methodology, our framework, you guys are the experts there, so I wanted to refer to them. And I'm happy, you know, I hope we had that conversation. The one, the other side of this, that I don't know if Louis touched on yet, was the fact that we want to try to present this, obviously finances are always a limiting factor, right? I don't know if you guys looked at your emails last night on this? Didn't, okay, so when I took a look at this, I was like, okay, well, if we want to make this happen, it's much more viable if we can find recurring costs that are already in the budget that we can repurpose for this. So this is not, you wouldn't consider this a, an increase, so in the traditional sense.
You're not asking to increase your.
Yeah, we're not asking to increase the total amount of the budget, we're asking to redirect funds that are already there. And there's two primary sources of those funds. The first one is the, the contract that we have with the city of Sandpoint to provide prosecution services. That is worth $85,000 a year, and we've done that now for nearly 10 years, I guess six or eight or something like that. And through some mechanism that I don't totally understand, that money has always been put just back into the general fund. And actually Jessica identified this a few, several months ago, and she said, why is this happening? And I said, I guess I don't know. Like, we were always just kind of like.
It didn't really make sense.
Same team, let's just do it. But as long as we're looking for creative ways to make this work, now, I thought now would be a good opportunity to say, this office is earning that, that income, quote unquote, and it should be, you know, it should go back into the department that's earning it. And that seems to make intuitive sense. That's 85 grand. The other, there's other, there's 30, 30 grand also from this, you guys don't, aren't up to speed on this, but a year and a half ago or so, I was a big advocate for the adoption of a particular software program called Logical. And it's, it's supposed to help us with public records requests. And we needed it really badly at the time, because Veronica and I, we were spending about half our days reviewing public records requests. We were a very different organization at that time. Most of those requests were being generated internally. And so we needed help to make that process run more efficiently, because we weren't going to hire somebody else, and it was killing our productivity. That software is 2,500 bucks a month, so 30 grand in total. And before I came up with this, you know, kind of started working on this, I went to Veronica and asked her, do you agree that we can get rid of that software and still be effective with the amount of records requests we have now? And she said, yes.
Just because the amount of records requests have diminished?
Dropped, yeah, it's, thank goodness, like knock on wood, you know?
And the complexity has dropped. There, it's more in normal paradigm now.
We were giving records requests for like.
Before it was very difficult.
8,000, 8,000 pages of emails, or whatever. And there's no other alternative but for me and Veronica to go through those.
Many of them were asking for the lawyer's emails too, which is unusual. And then we have to look at all of the, yeah, so we have to look at, there's privilege that applies. So I mean, that takes forever, it's not, so the Bronckin does a great job, but it's not something that she can do, so. Then Bill, and even I was spending lots of time doing these things, so it's been refreshing to.
But thankfully, it's come back down to earth.
Yeah.
Veronica, I think.
I'm happy.
So.
We should work on that.
No.
Yes, we should work on that further.
So if you just, if we, if we take those two sources of funding alone, so that's 85, 30, so that's 115,000 bucks. And then this is the part that I was hoping that Jessica and Mike could help me with. So when you guys sent me the, the 25 projections for a budget for just the attorneys, attorneys plus Louis, because I know they're separately, you know, elected plus deputies. The total for that anticipated was just, almost 1.1 million, 1,91,000 and change. We're not exactly spending quite that much right now, because that included Scott's budget, or Scott's salary, excuse me. And he was paid pretty high, he's out here. We added Sarah, but there's a difference gap there, whatever. So I, I guess, I would defer to you guys on what the total amount is right now that we're putting there. But at least from my like rough back of the napkin math, if you give 115,000 dollars that we can commit to this, and we're asking for a 10% raise, and we're, you know, we projected 1.1 million, then that's a, we'll stay a little bit beneath that. And how, because we are gonna, our Westlaw account's gonna go up a couple hundred bucks a month. I'm trying to keep everything budget neutral, so we save a little.
Sandpoint's not the only contract that you guys, like, that you guys build for, right?
One little run with Ponray, I think, yeah. I, I don't know if it's even big enough to be meaningful, it's like five grand a whole year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, and if, since we, since we hoped to advocate for a flat 10%, and that was covered by those two things, then I figured no reason to worry about it. There are other potential funds that we discussed, as in like money we spend on outside counsel right now that might be redirected once Katie starts. But if, I don't know if it's necessary to dive into that, because I'm not trying to, like I said, I'm not trying to get every dollar. Like, I just think that the 10% is, is realistic. So we can, we can cover that with those two sources of funding.
I think it's fantastic that you guys have found a way to fund it almost, well, limit it. I guess the 110 or 115 doesn't really cover the benefit increase.
That's what I want to ask you about, is there, is there a corresponding increase when you do the?
I mean, you can kind of guess, it's gonna be about 35% would be the top of your, you know, for Percy and whatnot.
Okay.
So you can kind of, you can kind of use that as a rough estimate.
Okay.
I think that we definitely do have departments that run a little hotter on their benefit line than 35, but it's a pretty generally used estimate, so even if that was the case, I mean, I think for the benefit that you guys are talking about in being able to attract and retain and the work that y'all are doing, it's, I, I think it's critical that we have you guys fully staffed and you have found the majority of the cost, like it's not gonna be an added, like a need, yeah?
Plus, they can't recruit right now. And if the envelope of the justice fund changes shape a little bit going into next budget year, I can't see that it wouldn't be ample to cover this.
So I have a few questions. I like, I like hearing that we would, we're gonna try to cut down outside counsel.
Right, yes.
It's hard right now, because we have at least one open position. Is that open right now? Are you actively recruiting for?
Yes.
Okay. And is that figured into these numbers? Because that's gonna add another 100-plus thousand a year?
I think that's included in the 25 estimates, yeah, that we need.
It is.
Okay.
And we're also still worried, we don't know exactly what our insurance, I mean, depending on how our insurance goes, we, you know, we might have additional need for all the outside counsel, or if we went to First Dollar Insurance, we might need less. Like, there's another, that's another variable here that we're not 100% on.
And the other concern that I have is being fair to the whole organization, right? Because the last thing I want to do is cause morale problems.
Right.
Oh, how come the prosecutor's office got a 10% raise and Roden Bridge got two and a half? So that's something that we have to balance.
Yes.
So I, I think it's our job to be responsible and look at the needs, and then try and fit it as best that we can across the whole organization.
I would distinguish between the prosecutor's office and public defenders that was here and just about every other department. That's an entirely different order of magnitude, it's an entirely different type of employee. It's a professional level, you get this, I mean, as, as lawyers, as passing the bar, you know, that's not your typical run-of-the-mill.
And that's fine to say, but you know that there's 400-plus employees here that may look at it differently.
Not every one of them paid their dues to go through college.
Yeah.
What makes you guys?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, right?
Does all of the process of, does their number at 10% kind of drive with what you guys have seen so far? Or you don't have?
And I'm not seeing any figures, maybe that was in the email that I didn't see as far as people's salaries now and what it would look like if they got a 10% raise?
Yeah, so there was, I think I had some attachments here, right? Here we go. I sent this all yesterday, so sorry if we didn't get it in time. Here's what the, is from, this is from Cooten County.
Okay.
Here's what our projections were at the start of the year for hours. And like I said, not completely up to date, because we have had some personnel changes. But you can see, you can take a look at that and see the, like, the difference between individual positions going down, starting with the elected, and then also having, you know, they, they do have them broken out by roughly equivalent, you know, attorney 1, 2, 3, or, you know, 5, chief deputy, and so on. So, like I said, the, on average, the, I think when I tried to look at it and pick a number in their matrix that was comparable to the employees we had, on the high and the low end, it's anywhere, we're anywhere between 10 and 15% below what they are, sometimes closer to 20. And then when, in the mid-range of our employees, we're somewhere between, like, between 0 and 10. Like, there's a, there's a bit of a, like, variable there. So that was what I was able to figure out.
So I don't want you to take this the wrong way, but we obviously can't compare or compete with Cooten County, because every department comes with the same argument. The sheriff comes with that argument.
Right.
We're losing deputies to Cooten County because they pay more. Oh yeah, but we have a better living, you know, environment for some like-minded people than living down there. You lost one, but he lived in Cooten County, and like you say, so yeah, money's a factor, but there's always other things that are factors. So I'm just trying to put all this together. If this is something that's necessary, then we obviously need to look at it. And then I guess my other question would be, you know, 10%, 8%? I don't know where, where, where that is. Hope you understand my thinking on that. You know, what does an 8% across the board raise of the base cause to what money's, you know, this 115 or whatever that is? Does that get us a little closer? Instead of just picking a number 10%? That's one thing that I think this board's really trying to work harder on, is, you know, getting down to the brass tacks and finding the facts, and not just throwing out a number, not saying that you are. But, you know, can we support that? Or is 12, 12% better, or is 8% better, or?
What would be each of our timelines on having those benchmarks?
Raising the base for this?
Well, the benchmarks for those positions for equity, like where they should be.
Well, we have, the only one we have, which is a comparable county, is Cooten County.
Yes, we're full stepping grade.
We have the range for those like positions.
I just asked for a stepping grade.
I think it's fair to say, I think you guys would agree that we're not competing with Cooten County, right?
Right.
We, we can't pay the same wages they can.
Right. And we're not asking for that.
Okay, yeah, so.
Yeah, so I'll. We are competing with Cooten County at times for the same group of people from which to try to hire and retain. However, we're not physically capable of competing with them financially, we can't keep up. So I, I think there's that, there's that tension that always exists, because the reality is we're geographically close enough that we compete for some of the same people on the same market. But I agree with Commissioner Corn that, you know, we don't have the same tax base.
Right.
And you've, and you said that, Louis, I mean, you made that statement. So I understand that we're, I think we're all on the same page with recruitment and retention are important, and we need to work on that issue and come up with a solution. I agree with Commissioner Corn, we, I'd like, I'd like us to parse the data a little bit more to figure out what do we think the right number would be to try to address that issue that you're facing? And do you have any other feedback from your, the University of Idaho experience or anyplace else with regard to, do we know what a more, like, what's a competitive number look like? Or are there other considerations, other factors that we need to be looking at when it comes to recruitment that are the less tangible but still important? Do we have any other database that?
I don't think we have any other hard data. I'm sure there are other intangibles, don't get me wrong. And again, you're, so we're competing over a very small pool of people. And what I may not have articulated quite as well is, it's become a lot smaller, and there's reasons for it. Compensation is one reason for it. I think another is frankly, the public perception. Now, it's, when I was younger, you know, becoming a prosecutor was a noble goal. You knew you weren't gonna make as much money as a private lawyer, but you were doing the right thing. You know, my dad hated lawyers, but, you know, I'd be like, well, if you hate me, he's like, well, no, you're not, you're not really, you're not a lawyer. You put bad guys in jail. And I was like, yeah, okay, I, I get that. So there, there was other intangibles in society today that is not as highly valued. So my, my daughter is a one L, first-year law student in Boise, she's down in Boise, not in Moscow. She says that in her class, there are only a handful that are even considering becoming prosecutors. So that's not all about money. Definitely part of it is about money, but there are other intangibles out there. But it's a very small pool of people that we can recruit from, and it's become smaller.
And then, so regarding.
revenue that's produced from services provided by the prosecutor's office directly to other entities, that strikes me as inappropriate that the county's been putting that into the general fund. Regardless of the dollar amount, I wanna be consistent with how we do it. So, I don't care if it's one dollar or a hundred thousand dollars that we're getting from another entity. I wanna treat it the same way.
That could go, you know, Sandpoint next year could say, we don't wanna use you anymore, Louis. We're gonna hire our own person.
Yeah.
And I know they've looked at that. The, the issue is frankly, is that the number, we do it for a number that's so far below what it would take them to install a new city attorney, prosecutor position.
Yeah, cause they're not having to pay for all the overhead that goes with it.
Yeah, eighty-five is.
They're not gonna find anyone for you.
No, I, I'll be honest with you.
If we can't.
It's clearly more than double that it would cost them and maybe as much as Kirkland, just to be honest. And I know that, and I think they know that. And, um, our relationship with the city police department is very good. And so, I don't see, while they could go a different direction, I don't see that happening in the near future.
And it just.
It's their interest for sure.
Yeah.
For me, the first thing is just gaining that awareness. I, I just, I want us to be as consistent as possible. So, I want all those contracts to be treated the same way with how the funding moves. Um, regardless of the value. And then, the other question that's connected with that is, if that has been going into the general fund, then if, if we redirect that, then what's that, what has that been funding that now is no longer being funded at the, within the rest of the county budget?
Nothing.
Okay.
It's not, it's not something, I don't think that's on the budget necessarily. I think it's treated as unanticipated revenue.
Oh, okay, so we're not gonna lose.
I'll verify that.
Funding of a specific budget item.
That would be.
My word.
It wouldn't be locked to a specific item in every case.
Okay, but, but I guess more importantly, it wouldn't create a shortfall of revenue necessary to backfill or support an existing budget item?
I don't believe so.
From the general.
If it's unanticipated revenue, it would not create a shortfall.
Cause that's.
If it was planned, then it's part of our existing pool already.
Yeah, cause like Commissioner Cornson, I appreciate that you guys are looking at how to try to fund a solution to the problem that you're presenting. But I wanna have a high level of confidence that we're not creating a secondary problem by trying to solve the first problem. I know that's nobody's intent, but I would like to see all that information clearly defined before the board makes a decision.
And Bill, could I ask you to give me like a apples-and-apples comparison? Um, because I think what you did here on, on Bonner County's employees, you, you kinda broke it all down, and, and this looks like it's, Cooney County's probably includes the FICA and the Percy and all that, I'm assuming, or does it not?
Uh, no, I think that's just their salaries.
So, this is their base pay?
That's their salary.
And then this is our base pay?
Yes.
Cause I'm trying to add these lines up to come up, and I'm like.
Yeah, the, I think that's what just, just.
It's just the way we present it to them to look at. We separate.
So, base and base.
Yeah.
So, so, so the other thing, and, and all departments have the same problem. But you've got, you're competing with Cooney County for the wages, so you've got much higher wages at Cooney County. And our real estate, we have veiled real estate prices here in our county, and they don't in Cooney County. So, you've got a, a significant higher cost of living here and.
Lower wages.
Now, and I totally understand that. I totally understand that, but we, that problem exists for every employee of the county, not just.
As I started off that way, right?
And that's a real problem.
Right.
And the county. The, the one thing with law students, so, you know, I graduated from law school, twenty-eight years old or whatever. So, you're a little older graduating, obviously, than, than other people that are just graduating from college or going on the workforce at eighteen. But then, you, you've got a family, a lot of times by then, which I did, three kids and wife, and coming here. And then you have law students, I, uh, law school debt, so I had seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So, you're, you're paying, you know, that, plus you have a young family, and you come to work for Bonner County. I was able to do that at forty thousand dollars a year because my house costs two hundred thousand dollars. The same house today is a million dollars. So, it's really very, very difficult to grab a twenty-eight-year-old or a thirty-year-old, a female or male attorney with a family and say, hey, come on, Bonner County, it's a great place to live. And they're like, yeah, I get it, I just don't know.
I get it.
And I, I, I agree, I think we have, my, my understanding and perception is we have both situations. I agree with Commissioner Corn that we have to look countywide when we make these decisions, how all the employees perceive and understand and are impacted by these decisions. And at the same time, we do have different realities that impact different groups of employees with what, what I'll consider sort of the prerequisite cost to enter and be qualified within a certain job field. Like you're saying, some jobs come with a burden of debt and things that other jobs don't. But, at the end of the day, we have it in our human resources policy, and I think it's just a good business practice that we're supposed to be looking at how competitive we are within our geographic market on a regular basis. And so, those are factors we need to look at across the board and, and understand. And so, um,
I appreciate this. Information.
Yeah, no, we're, we're not gonna like, right, like, there's no question, we're not gonna like that, the, the result of that information, that evaluation. But, um, I do definitely appreciate you guys presenting all this information for our consideration. Appreciate the level of detail that you've started with in trying to figure out funding solutions. I'm very supportive of trying to figure out a solution to help your office be able to better retain and recruit. But I agree with Commissioner Corn. I do want us to evaluate further what we think the right number is and then verify how the funding of that works as it relates to not only your office's budget, but the entire county's budget. Just to be sure, we really understand the impacts of any decision that we come to.
We're not, we're not digging a hole or filling another hole, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and again, I, I know that's nobody's intent, but, but because we haven't verified that yet.
And that's, that's definitely why I asked these guys to come, because I figured that, like, you know, I, I have a certain amount of data that I've been able to gather. I anticipated that you guys would need, like, we need to know more about this and we need to figure this out. Because, yeah, you guys are put in that position where you have to take everybody's interest into account, so.
I think this is a great starting point for the conversation, and I appreciate that you guys presented this much to start with. So, but yeah, having, having the auditor be able to confirm what happens to the rest of the budget if we make those changes. Having the board decide, you know, whether the board agrees with my opinion that we should treat all of this revenue that comes from the work that the prosecutor's office is doing for other entities should all be treated the same regardless of the dollar value. I think we just need to be consistent. I don't see why we go into the general fund. I think it should be funding the prosecutor's office.
Sure. It's not in the actual, our general fund, but, yes.
But still, just.
No, no, it's all good. It's the right language, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, that's good. We need that clarification, or at least I need it. And then, also just looking at to understand how, wanna confirm with human resources, if the board wants to move forward in this direction regardless of what the percent ends up being, the total dollar value. Is our understanding of what it does to our stepping grade? Are there any unintended consequences? Like, let's evaluate that and make sure that we see how that's going to play out. Because I, as somebody indicated earlier, I wanna be sure that any changes we make, that we're not unintentionally capping people out, that we wanna maintain as long-term employees by doing this. If our stepping grade doesn't account for it properly, then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna reduce somebody's value by a number of years, and they're gonna cap much sooner and not wanna stay with our organization if we haven't looked ahead to understand.
And this will be a consideration because the prosecutor's office does fall on the civil wage stepping grade. So, that's an excellent point because we can't increase your ten percent without increasing that entire market. So, that, that may not be the right solution. We may need to adjust and do a step, like, closest step.
Again, yeah, so I just, I wanna evaluate the, the proposed solution, what are the impacts and the consequences of that proposed solution? And is there, if the board wants to do something to make a compensation change, what's the best way to do, but, yeah, so that we don't create this unintended negative? I just, I'm still trying to get my head fully wrapped around this stepping grade system. How do you adopt it in the last year? And the more I dig into it, I'm not real happy with how it was created. I see a lot of issues like that that we've created.
And I think they knew that going into it because we were just going into it, and there could have to be some adjustments made as we.
Without, without believing. Right, yeah, so we've got a little bit of a muddy mess that we're trying, already. And now, you know, so as we're gonna make these changes, let's take a half-step back and make sure that we're thinking about the long-term effect so that we're not further exacerbating a problem that was created.
So, if we increase the base, not necessarily the stepping grade?
We won't, we won't be able to do that because that would be the civil wage for everybody. That's all the county employees.
Or you could, or, or you could do that, you could do a pay code for the prosecutor's office, which would get around that, like you're talking. For the attorneys. Yep, for the attorneys.
Oh, like a stipend, or not a stipend, but a, or a assignment on this.
Would that make a harder in subsequent years?
Potentially, I think, I think maybe doing that, that's embarrassing.
For the, for the stepping grades.
So, if we're gonna use, I think if we're gonna use Cooney County kind of as a benchmark, and we're gonna say we wanna be within ten percent of that, that that's what we should be looking for across the board. So, I know the people, you said, there's less of a differential kind of in your mid-range. Um, so maybe they wouldn't get as much of a bump, but to, to have a benchmark and say, okay, we're gonna be, we're gonna try to keep our salaries within ten percent of Cooney's for these positions. And then what I think HR would have to do is find that closest stepping grade. Like, the closest to whatever number that ends up being, because I don't think we wanna shift, like, we can't.
If we raise the base, that means other departments, cause if prosecutor's office falls within the civil grade step matrix, they're, they're not separate like the sheriff's office or the law enforcement.
Yeah, so I think, I think we can do it. We'll just have to do, uh,
Gotcha.
a little bit more work to come up with what that total number looks like. And then I think, yeah, your staff is gonna have to understand that this is what we're benchmarking from. You are already closer to where Cooney's attorneys are in your same level of expertise and whatnot. So, we'll see what we can come up with there before we just come back to you guys. And I'll also do the research to confirm that that miscellaneous revenue is, is available.
Okay, that would be appreciated.
Already prescribed to something else.
And then, if I'm understanding correctly, we'd also need to determine, are the number of grades within the prosecutor's positions adequate with making this adjustment? Are we gonna cap out too soon? Do we need to add one or two grades within that bandwidth? Okay, so, then, it sounds to me like the prosecutor's office is going to work with the auditor and HR to come up with a more detailed presentation to bring back to the board to suggest what, what you think would be the best approach for, for us to dig into more and consider? That answers all the questions that we brought up?
Yes, between now and our budget. Your expectation, because I don't have time to do that.
I know, who's busy?
So, Louis, how, how many open positions do you have right now?
We just filled one, so we're basically one attorney.
Just one attorney, what position is that?
It's, so I'm moving Katie Sherrod over to civil, so it's a criminal.
Fill a criminal?
Yes.
The hardest one to fill?
Both are hard, to be honest with you. Civil's.
Equally difficult?
Possibly more fun to you if you have to take over our sheriff stuff and allow him to outsource it, third-party attorneys? Can we make sure we give that as a possibility to continually keep money out of our budget for hiring third-party attorneys for Sheriff Wheeler instead of filming up the prosecutor's office? And so, if that's a successful implementation, that means there's, there's another body needed. I know that we wanna move a different direction insurance-wise, but that does change prosecutor needing to address some things outside of that.
These are one, before you got here, we did talk about different ways to offset this proposed increase. And the two that I had identified was the City of Sandpoint contract that currently goes into the Justice General Fund. And then also the, the contract we have for Logical that we could effectively do without. So, we were only really talking about those two pools of money. And we didn't talk about potential, we, well, we, we mentioned the possibility of absorbing more work into our office, but we didn't talk about potential savings there, so.
But a rate.
Be a part of the, um, the, when we come back to you guys with more information, we can talk about that.
Are you talking about also a rate increase for people that have contracts that are very low for services that they have available for the prosecutor's office?
We have nothing yet.
So, when you come back, we'll come back about how much those rates need to go up since they haven't changed. But the cost of legal house got up and availability of law needs to equally go up. It can't be that the county always absorbs it.
That was kind of a segue into one, a question I had for you when you were talking about the city. And we contracted with them for eighty-five thousand a year, and when was the last time that's been adjusted?
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
From seventy-five to eighty-five.
Okay, so is that an option? I mean, it, it, it all adds up, right?
It does, we'll get it done.
Every year, we need to review contracts to make sure that we're not just reshuffling burden from one to another. Because when you look at also City of Sandpoint, they make sure we pay our fair share of every fee that they tack on. So, and that's the way it should be, and we should do the same every time it's a contract to make sure it's the correct rate. Nothing more and nothing less. But I wanna make sure we, when Commissioner Corn asked about the number of personnel, that we leave a question mark because of, I have a desire to stop outsourcing to third-party attorneys because it's leaking out of your ability to build up not just your personnel, but the institutional knowledge that will carry throughout your office about law enforcement cases and employment law. And the more we outsource, the more dependent, and then we're subject to their rate increases versus us having more control. So, I wanna put a question mark, possibly one point five, two, only because we don't know what that looks like because we haven't done it.
Specializes in employment law.
We should, and so that would mean he would need another person potentially for that. I just don't like, whenever I tell Steve, I need. You know what? He needs no more people.
She wants to add on more headache for me?
It actually is.
My salary's stable.
Look, I was, look, my calendar shows where I was today. I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that there's more growth that, than just saying one more person on the criminal side because we haven't, we have allowed outsourcing more than we would like to for politics. And we need to pull that in, and that means don't give a, a meeting that says, well, at this meeting, you said you only needed one win. We might need two, just while we have options open.
Okay.
And potential for a salary change on you.
Potential?
Well, he felt bad about it, so he's.
He didn't exclude himself from the spreadsheets.
We, so many, many years ago, we had basically.
He's been accepting it for twenty years. It's not my fault that he hasn't argued for it just yet. He needs a good lawyer.
I think having two permanent civil deputies is really gonna help. Obviously, I have a lot of civil experience too, and so, you know, I, I like to be in that realm as well. So, I, I think we'll be good.
That was our paradigm for a long time.
Yeah.
When Scott, when Scott was in the fold and I was, you know, doing my thing, having two deputies seemed to be pretty, pretty productive. We were able to handle those things. But obviously, that hasn't been the case now for close to a couple of years, maybe, in one, in one fashion or another. So, nobody's more excited to get another civil deputy involved than I am, you know, like, I'm really looking forward to that.
And we have that now?
We do, we're hoping to.
Yeah, Katie is, is moving over. It's just we have, with the, you know, we're two down right now. We're about to only be one down in criminal. And with that workload, she's, you know, being retained in, in the criminal world still. But she is moving over.
Okay.
She's been taking part in a ton of things with Bill and I. She's working on several projects.
Ease her in.
Biasmos, you know, like, when things happen, we just include her, and then we're starting to, you know, get, get her up to speed on stuff, so.
A little nervous about bringing her over here to meet you.
No, no, don't do that, yeah. Get her to sign first.
I have that. He likes.
Don't blow it right out the gate.
It would be easier if Bill would just take over the HR.
It would be easier if Bill would just take over the HR office.
Hey man, don't threaten me with a good time.
All that space.
Well, you know what, there was a, so, I, when Scott was here, um, we had, you know, when we had two civil deputies, we had a division of assignments by department. I definitely had a lot more time to devote to, I mean, well, there was a time when I did our internal investigations.
She meant physically, right there.
Oh, you mean like over, yeah, yeah.
You notice I didn't say anything, because he says no, but...
I thought you meant like, like...
It sounded like, even Louis was like, did you hear what she said?
I'm just saying that we did have a, the division of, of assignments was good, you know, but that's the way we split that up, and I did have a lot more time.
When you take on the employment side plus planning, you might as well be an old HR.
He's loving that idea.
Man, I just, Will will take over here, guys. Somebody help him, bro.
That's the reason he said, go ahead with me.
All right, so we, it sounds like we have a direction, we pretty clear on we're moving forward with this, and, all right, awesome.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or...
Not until they come forward with the next proposal.
All right, thanks, guys. It is 10:20, and this meeting is adjourned.
You have to relearn that, you know?
Soon.
Soon? That's how everybody does electronic meetings.
I just leave?
There was a Simpson episode where he was running the nuclear plant, and he had a dodo bird just pressing a button over there.
That's what remote employees do. There's algorithms on their computers now to do that.
You need to teach me how to do that.
Tell us how you really feel.
I have on the drill room.
It's not like a 50...
She has pushed me out, it's almost Donald's people, and that was seems a little bit weird. So he told me Newsom was traveling with a presser yesterday.
Thank you guys for listening to that. I kind of anticipated if you would want more information.
No, not me, no.
But just an opening, open introduction, see what's going on.
Yeah, it's a good start, I think it was a good start.
Great, great.
So, it has some P to start with, and...
Yeah, we're, we're just, I talked to people honestly, and I said, like, how are you guys doing? And he's like, we got once a month, we just can't, like, everybody trying to apply, it's like, I can't imagine working with that person, and I was like, oh, no, damn. You know? So it's kind of all over.
Yeah, you're like, oh, wait, wait, you're getting applicants.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a good start, so...
I would rather not be part of the receiving, you know, everything, because tell me what you think the entire public, because it looks like all...